It is 6:30. We'll call the Ashland School Board of Order meeting Tuesday, May 2nd to order. Next item is pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call in Sandra, Deb, Renee, and Glenn, and Jamie is absent with notice. Minutes, regular meeting of April 12th. Let everybody get a chance to come over. Is there any changes or corrections? If not, I think I'll make sure to do it on. Any other discussion? If all in favor. Opposed? So, 3, 0, 1. Livelihoods on the floor. Agenda item only. You're the floor, Jeff.
Question for the lesson.
Okay. Moving on, communications, Ashland Planning Board. Do we have a butter notification that's in your packet? Went to the website and downloaded their agenda. It's the case, 2017-3 Kirby. Owner site plan review, 146 Main Street. Change of use to NY, I'm going to assume New York, Vega Dally and Shop, which is the old weightlifting building.
Well, beside the post office.
Yes, the post office.
It was already assigned, um, future home, yeah.
So I don't see that affecting us versus weightlifting. So I don't know. I don't think we need to center up to the planning board meeting unless somebody really wants to go. Is the board okay with that?
They're in the restaurant now.
Right, exactly. We already got Dr. Don to try and make sure.
They're not serving off of home.
They're not serving off of home, I'm aware of. It wouldn't be on our property anyways. And most of the traffic's going to be in the parking lot, mistaken in the little post office. That's supposedly what makes New York vehicles fast. Administrative report? Principal's report?
Yeah. It's starting to come up. Yeah. Come on, it's coming up. We're going to do the enrollment report while, isn't that the last one?
Yep.
Just while that's forming. We got a new primary stream this week, so we are up one from the numbers on the list.
Sure, you're 167.
All right, so, just wanted to give a little bit of a follow-up. Mary and I met after our last meeting, which we had at Plymouth Regional High School. And we had four great students come and talk to us about their experiences, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, senior. They, I thought they all did just an excellent job in articulating their experiences in transitioning to the high school, the things that were struggles and challenges, and the things that went really well. As kind of takeaways from that, these were some of the things that Mary and I, in processing what the students said, that Mary and I came up with kind of this list of things that we need to follow up on, or maybe have some more conversations about extended learning opportunities, writing challenges, co-curricular participation, and transportation considerations. So, maybe a goal for us here at Ashland Elementary School in transitioning our eighth graders would be to, you know, increase opportunities to extend student learning through online platforms. In the past, we've used Virtual Learning Academy. That is a free New Hampshire program. It's a charter school, Virtual Learning Academy charter school. It's free for New Hampshire students. Then it has some challenges. It's, the component of it that's the most difficult is that before our students can start with a V-Lax course, they have to go through a process where parents have to have, they have to have a, like a conference call with the online teacher. So you have to set that up between the student, the parent, and the teacher. Sometimes that takes a little while to put in place. But also, from our perspective, we couldn't really support students who were doing some of the V-Lax courses because we have no connection to the program. So we don't even know where they are in the program, what they're supposed to be doing. It's really supposed to be completely independent for the students. Not just to show you their way, but they offer, they have some really great offerings, middle school level, high school level, adult education. We've had students in the past do some of the V-Lax courses, but like I said, there's some struggles in kind of the setup and the maintenance of that. Because the school's not connected, we can't even kind of track where the student is and make sure they're moving forward and getting things done that they need to get done. So that is one of the options that was mentioned. Khan Academy is another option. We've actually, this year, have started being able to use Khan, originally with our internet safety protocols. Khan Academy, because all of the videos are in YouTube, Khan Academy was blocked. So we had a really difficult time trying to figure out how to download those videos so that we could use them offline. Now, our new system that Lester set up allows us to screen in the educational videos that are in Khan Academy. This can be a really great tool. It requires some time for the teachers to understand how to use it and to personalize it, but it has math, science, computing, arts, and humanities, something that we will definitely look into using more of moving forward. Middlebury Interactive. This is something that we've looked at in the past. It's pretty expensive. It's a digital language learning platform, but it is pretty expensive per student. I think the numbers I got originally when I looked, $238 per student to do that. We have some other programs that are free. We have Duolingo, which is an app that has over 200 languages, an interactive app that we have, middle school students can use. We also have some Rosetta Stone, French, Italian, German, we have three. And then we have had another Spanish program for students to use in the past, that they could choose to do that. We haven't had students interested in doing that the past couple of years, I think because their schedules have been really busy, and we've really tried to make them really engaging experiences, so they haven't pursued outside opportunities like this. Eureka Math is an online program, it's completely free, it's developed by New York teachers. It has whole big components and learning modules, which is really neat. This is something that we're going to look more into, because it has, it has math skills by, actually by tiers, grouped in strands, so that they can connect very clearly, and it kind of gives a much clearer learning path for kids. So this is something we'll be looking at for next year. Actually, at the end of this year, we'll start looking at this. And this is the Johns Hopkins Program. It's the Center for Talented Youth Program. This has really great online options for accelerated learning. Again, this is a four-fee program. This is, three months tuition for this is $785 per student. You can do it by course, or you can do it as an individually-driven course, or you can do it in batches, you can do it in like, almost like semesters and groups, but it's still pretty pricey, but it is a really, really great program. This whole, the whole Johns Hopkins Program, this is an excellent program. So it would be something worth considering if we had some students that were really accelerated and wanted to be challenged beyond, you know, what we can do here at school for them. A writing goal that we've talked about, and we're going to actually start in the coming year, after getting the feedback from the kids about how they were challenged in the writing process, because although they write here at Ashland, when they get to the high school, their expectation to write longer, more, more complex assignments, that is something that we need to really work on with the kids. So Katie Alston, our middle school English teacher, had spent some time at Plymouth High School last fall. She went into English classes, but we want to get her back over there and have her collaborate with some of the teachers. We're also working as an English Language Arts Committee in the coming year to write K-8 writing rubrics, opinion writing, narrative writing, expository writing, persuasive writing. We have, I have a combination of Lucy Cawkins rubrics, who's a really well-known writing teacher. I have a couple from Plymouth Regional High School, and I also have some from, that were very nicely shared with us from Rochester School District. So, I just printed out a few, just so that if you wanted to take a look and pass them around, you could see that we will be developing our own for our K-8 learning progression, so that consistently at each grade level, the teachers are scoring writing assignments the same way, fairly inconsistently, and that the expectation for writing, for how much students are writing, for what, the quality of writing, the quantity of writing is consistent throughout the school, and building so that they are more prepared to do the writing they need to do at the high school. We also talked about co-curricular activities, and that how important it is for kids to get involved. When we do our, kind of our transition to the high school, Carrie Samborn, our guidance counselor, does a move and on up module. She does a really great job working with the high school to have the high school counselors come in, talk about the process. Carrie reviews the program of studies with them, does a lot of work with them about what the offerings are at the high school. When the kids go to the high school for their, kind of moving up night, they have, they are exposed to all sorts of clubs and activities, student representatives, National Honor Society students, they're toured through the building. That's been a really great process. Parents are in the auditorium, talking with the principal and the assistant principal about that kind of stuff, where the kids are talking with other students and are kind of led through and introduced to coaches and different clubs and co-curricular opportunities. That said, we, we heard from the kids that sometimes it's difficult for them to be involved in that, and as Mary and I were talking, we were kind of brainstorming, what are some things we could do to, to figure out how to get our students more invested and connected in co-curricular activities at the high school? We thought possibly surveying former Ashland students about their participation or not in these clubs and activities. Maybe talk about the possibility of thinking about having a late bus to get students from the high school back to Ashland after practices and clubs are finished later in the day, or in the early evening. And also, the preseason for fall sports starts mid-August, and I know that former students that I, that I know that have come back to visit, and they've said they haven't participated in a fall sport right away, it's because they couldn't get to the high school for that August early practices. So, just in talking with Mary about that, we thought maybe that's something that we should be thinking about, kind of in the bigger picture. A couple of years in a row, Miss Samborn and I have talked about during that moving up, move and on up module with the eighth graders, of having some of the former eighth graders come back and talk to our kids about the high school, what are the challenges, what are the things that we could be prepared for, what are the things they need to know. We just haven't been able to make that happen. It always kind of happens, all of those things are happening at once, getting the kids up there for moving up night, getting them, the guidance counselors to come to us. So it seems to be kind of a time crunch, because they're doing it based on getting schedules set for the coming year. But that is definitely something that we would love to do. In the past, one or two years ago, Mr. Parsons had us come up and do a private tour, not during a night when there were lots of other kids there, but showed our kids around, and they had lunch in the cafeteria. That was a really good experience and helped them feel, I think, more at ease and connected. A high school also had a summer program for a couple of years that we sent some students to, and that was a great opportunity for them to get connected right away with the school, and to not walk in that first week and feel like they were uncomfortable or out of place. They'd already made connections in the school, met teachers, knew some of the other students, and that was really successful. I'm not sure why they're not doing it this year. I don't know if it's a budgeting thing, or if it was a grant opportunity that just ran its course, but that was a really great way to get our kids invested in the school early. We also talked about, or heard that in the past, they've had students take Algebra I or foreign language courses at the high school while they were still in elementary school. So again, as Mary and I were talking about this, we were thinking, what are some of the things that we could revisit? And that was one of the things on the list.
And just to interject about the transportation, this certainly came up with the McCall study, just looking at, are there opportunities to make, you know, stronger connections? And certainly, you know, some of these have a budget impact, but they are just ideas to begin thinking about as we, you know, prepare for the next budget cycle. Is it something to consider?
Want to talk to you just a little bit about Project Week, because it's right around the corner. But first, I wanted to share with you, we got a lovely note with a $25 check from the Ashland Women's Club, which was really nice, wanted to share that with you guys, for Project Week. We have six teams this year, but three of the teams are working together toward one goal. Their main goal is to create a literary magazine. So Wordsmith, Snapshot, and Metamorphosis are going to combine their talents and their goals, their learning goals, to create a magazine. Wordsmiths are really concerned with marketing, advertising, graphic design, and creative writing. Their goal is to design and create and publish this multi-dimensional magazine that includes photography, writing, art, and tutorials, in combination with these other two teams. The Snapshot group is really focused on photography. Their goal is to travel, to kind of use their photography skills, or to grow their photography skills in the process, and use some persuasive writing to try to get people to visit these touristy areas that they would like to take photos of. When they first started this process, they thought they were going to have, you know, a 40-page magazine printed, after we got some of the prices back, on how much it would cost to print, you know, 10, 40-page magazines. We had talked to one of our local business owners who said, you know, you could talk to them about if they made it, the magazine itself focus on some of the local attractions, and all of the amazing things that are kind of in the heart of New Hampshire around here. It might be a great opportunity for businesses, local businesses, to buy some advertising to help pay for the publishing of that magazine, because it would be featuring this local area, and then they could put it at local, at the little tourist booths and restaurants and things like that, as something that visitors could pick up and kind of browse through. So the kids thought that was a really great idea. So they've taken that to heart and are making plans to figure out how they can get that done. The Metamorphosis team, their goal is to, was to explore how special effects makeup enhances a storyline in a play or a movie. They want to understand how to put all that together, and combine that with this magazine. They will have a section of the magazine all about makeup tutorial, they want to work with makeup artists locally that are involved in the drama programs around here, like One of Psaki Playhouse, and maybe the Silver Center for the Arts at Plymouth State. Mr. Roboto, that is an interesting group. They are learning how to make robotic machines that have specific tasks through the use of coding. They just were awarded, I guess you could say, through a Donors Choose account, a Lego mind, mind state robotics kit. So they're really excited about that. It actually already came, so they're very excited. They are going to spend some time doing these Lego challenges, they're going to do some coding, and they're also, I think, going to visit the Boston Museum of Science, because there is a special exhibit to do with robotics there. Heart of the Crossover is a team of kids that want to learn how to coach basketball players, how to improve basketball skills in the offseason. Their ultimate goal is to run a little mini clinic for fourth and fifth graders, to prepare them for the coming basketball season next year. So they're going to visit New Hampton, Plymouth State, they talked about UNH, I don't know if they're going to be able to connect with them and make that happen, but they want to interview coaches and players about the skills that they need and the training, the things that they do to prepare for basketball season. Straight Outta Ashland group want to challenge themselves physically and mentally through a series of activities, events, and training exercises. They're about increasing their trust and building their capacity for teamwork through these persevering, through these very difficult challenges. They plan to use four techniques developed by Navy SEALs to help survive their selection process and adapt in stressful situations. Goal setting, mental visualization, positive self-talk, and breathing control. So this is a group of boys who participate and have participated for many years on the same teams, basketball, football, baseball. They get along really well together, they do a lot of athletic things together, but they wanted to be out of their comfort zone and be more challenged to do things that maybe need, you need to be physically athletic, but not necessarily work together to do these things. So they want to see, test themselves and see if they can work together under stressful situations and overcome these challenges, so that they'll be better together when they are on the team, on the sports field together. So that's an interesting group, and we're going to try to have someone come in and work with them on those four techniques, the goal setting, mental visualization, positive self-talk, and breathing control, which are all really good skills. So that's the last group of Straight Outta Ashland. The kids are really excited about these events coming up. This is a great week, and we do, the week after, on June 1st, we have our Project Week presentation night. Invite you to come to that. It's a 5:30 to 6 o'clock, kind of living exhibit hall in the, in the gymnasium, and then we shut off the lights, and each group, each team does a multimedia presentation. So that takes about 40 minutes.
9:00.
It's June 1st. I believe it's a Thursday. You'll get, I think we sent out postcards for that anyway, to make sure that everyone knows that they are invited to attend. It's been a really great event the last two times that we've done this. This is our third year of Project Week, so pretty excited about how it's turning out so far, and having the kids be in charge of kind of the planning and organization of this process. I also want to let you know that because of the hard work of Joanne Bickford, we were recently awarded a $25,000 grant, known as the CLIF Year of the Book Grant. We're just going to give you some of those, so you can take a look at that. CLIF stands for Children's Literacy Foundation. This grant is going to give us the opportunity to have 15 to 20 literacy events during the upcoming school year. We're going to get free books for students, for classrooms, for our library, for the public library in Ashland. We will have author visits, writing workshops, inspiring programs, storytelling programs, illustrated workshops. The idea is not about direct instruction for reading, it's about really gaining momentum and developing students' love of reading and of literature, of books, of the writing process. They also provide a year of support after the program, and the summer reading program as well, which really gives you about a year and a half after the year of the book grant runs out, another year and a half of support with extra activities and fun things for the kids to do. So there'll be, we already kind of set up the schedule for the year. We will be sending out invitations, and there'll be notices and things like that for these upcoming events. Always, parents are invited and included, and we're going to have some really great offers come, and it's just, from the meeting we had today, it's going to be a really exciting year for kids who are interested in books and reading and writing, but even the bigger goal, those who are not, we think it's going to gain a lot of momentum in the school, to kind of connect the importance of reading and the love of reading for our kids and their parents. So that's a very exciting thing for us. We have some important dates coming up. Instead of writing them all on that, I'll put them down for you guys, so you can...
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Take them home, because there are so many things happening this time of the year, it is like a sprint from now till June. So with everything happening, I thought it would make it easier, so that you could take it with you, put it on your refrigerator. Right? Mark things off as you go. Just to point out a few things, there are kindergarten registration coming up, we already have, I believe, 16 students signed up to come and do that pre-screening for registration. Muffins for Mom in honor of Mother's Day, and donuts for Dad in honor of Father's Day are also coming up on the 18th and 19th. Our spring concert is also on the 18th. We have science NECAP testing coming up. We have the end of term five, the beginning of term six. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. We have the Ashland Women's Club, again, bringing a giant basket of goodies for us, fruits, and some little chocolates tucked in there between. Everyone's digging through the fruit to get to the chocolate, but very nice, very, very nice, and a card for Mom. And the book fair, three days. So if you are available, come and join us for any of those activities, we'd love to have you.
Shannon, if you wouldn't mind going back to the earlier slides from our follow-up from Plymouth Regional High School, I just wanted to see if the board had any other suggestions of things, based on some of the comments you heard, if there were other things you feel we should be focusing on, or if you feel like we have at least captured some important priorities to move forward.
I think you captured a lot of priorities, especially the ones that the kids...
Yeah, writing and...
Yeah.
Foreign language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Getting them to participate in co-curricular makes the transition easier. They start to make friends, because they're spread out now, they don't have the 15 to 20 kids a day, it's like 9 years, in some cases. So that getting involved in the co-curricular somehow, you know, it doesn't have to be a sport, it could be, Plymouth has a ton of options up there. I don't think all the kids maybe read the option, or don't understand what the option actually is, or what the option could bring, so it's, you know, it's one thing to say, the Spanish club, what does the Spanish club do? You know, different activities, or, you know, maybe a handout or something, you know, you can't write a book about it, but to help describe. So if I was to join that club, what am I going to do? If I was to join that activity, what, what does it accomplish, other than sometimes you read something and the name doesn't really, you know, carry to you a description of what the activity is? Maybe you get excited about the activity, but not because they mean it or something like that.
We talked about getting a list of all of the things that are offered at the high school, and maybe using that list, if we brought some of the kids back to talk to our kids, they could ask questions about specific clubs and activities on the list that might provide more clarity than we could, just by having that kind of description. But definitely getting them involved, especially at the very start of the year, and that's why I think that August time, sports, and when they're kind of doing preseason stuff, you know, if you can't get there August 15th, then you're missing that whole fall season. And that's really, that's where the kids are making new friends, older teammates, and just kind of developing some relationships, and that's an important thing for them.
Yeah, you know, it's a lot of big sports, but being on that...
Oh, so many, so many.
There are so many other opportunities for them. So even if they don't want to do sport, it still may be an opportunity to do something that really pleads interest, if they understand what is available.
And they really have a lot to offer, they do. It's such a very, I think it's a really rich environment for all different interests that kids have.
And when you get in one of those clubs, or one of those sports, or one of those activities, all of a sudden you've got faces, so when you're walking up down the hallway, you don't feel as alone, because you start to recognize, you start to build a new circle of friends.
Yeah.
Because you now have a common interest, because you're all in the same activity.
And you're right, after being with the same kids for nine years, some of these groups, like the best thing they can do is just kind of branch out and meet some new friends, and it really helps them just feel part of that big world.
And it's hard, because for nine years, it didn't have to be new friends.
Right. That's true, very true.
It's a totally new learning skill that they have to develop as well.
In a large population, it's a shocking adjustment.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Anything else anybody have on? Thank you, Shannon. We did enrollment already, so the next item is the financial report. We did enrollment already, so the next item is the financial report.
Thank you. In your packet, you have a financial general fund report through April 25th. Since the last report, we have spent on or encumbered an additional $12,650. Spending was spread throughout the budget. At this time, ninety-five point four percent of the budget has been spent or encumbered. At this point, if we close the books today, I estimate that we would end the year with That does not take into consideration the $120,000 for the roof. You have a report in your packet that shows that on a separate fund. We did estimate $30,000 being carried forward to reduce the 2017 tax burden or at the tax rate setting in the fall. We had talked about encumbering $10,000 for the gym lights and $7,000 for the security doorknobs. Both of those items were taken out of the 2017, '18 budget. There may be another request based on work that we are doing currently at the Facilities Committee, but we need to discuss that at our Facilities meeting on Thursday. However, it looks at this point, depending on what happens within the next month and a half of school, we could possibly withdraw $60,000 from the expendable trust and be able to absorb the other $60,000 in the budget. If that's, that's an option for the roof.
For the roof.
For the roof. That way, what that would allow the board to do is push up the final section of the roof a year. So again, that's the purview of the board, but I thought I would bring it up tonight so that as we prepare for next month, I'll bring forward encumbrance memo recommendations based on the discussion we have tonight, as well as we will need to have a public hearing before the next board meeting, you know, just prior to the next board meeting to withdraw from the expendable trust.
Anybody follow that? Everybody's okay with that program, that plan?
Let's go forward with that, okay?
Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Trish? Next item is business of the board. We do have one issue, Jamie has contacted me and said that because of his schedule, he's having a hard time getting here at five-thirty, so we'd like to step off with the Policy Committee, which is, which is fine. So we only need a new, new member for the Policy Committee. If it's okay, I'd like to nominate Renee for the Policy Committee. If I have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Four zero. Congratulations for that.
First committee, I'm really excited.
Next item is business of superintendent, compliance status report for 2015, '16 year.
So turn things over to Mr. Tchaka.
In your packet, you have attachment five each year. My department assesses us, students who from birth to three are identified by family-centered early supports. We have to ensure that if they continue to require services, that by their third birthday, we have an IEP and services in place. The 2015 period, we had one student who was referred to us, but by the time we worked with them, they no longer required services, but we were in a hundred percent compliance.
Thank you. Good job.
It's the staff.
Yeah.
Congratulations to them.
Next item is the general operating expenses.
You have Manifest 2023 in your packet along with explanations of the checks, but I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions on Manifest? I'll take a motion to approve, Renee. Shannon, do we have a second? Renee? No other discussion, all in favor? Four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is policies, second reading. Policy 4134, tutoring for pay. And we also have policy 5139, second reading, student health services. And policy 6179, second reading, field trips. Take a motion to approve all three. We'll prove them first. Motion first. Renee, you have a second. Sandra? Okay, any questions or comments?
I have a comment on, a couple of comments on 6179, field trips. As I read this, it clearly defines, I believe at the top, that there's a delineation between field trips versus other kinds of trips, class trips, winter rec. And so in the third paragraph, I thought that the word "field" should be included in front of "trip" in the second sentence because it sounded like that this applied to the field trip and not to other kinds of trips.
The cost of the trip, is that right?
The overall cost.
The overall cost of the trip, yes.
So if I understood the whole document correctly, after the first paragraph, it's really focusing on field trip protocol. And so I just thought that if we could spell out the word "field" in front of "trip" so that there wasn't any confusion. It's kind of like canon of the last.
Yeah.
That helps my comments on that.
You can do that. Everybody okay with it?
Would you have the same thing at number one? The degree to which the activity slash trip strongly connects?
Right.
And two?
Yeah, I think it just follows kind of down.
It was removed in a couple, in the last two paragraphs on that page. We could add those back in if that, to be consistent.
Well, and I think in that, in that case, that was fine because in the first sentence it had "field slash class trip." So at that point, you're...
Got it.
You're more clearly defining what you're speaking about.
Everybody okay with those changes?
So can I ask a question in the very last paragraph, the first sentence? The principal shall notify the board of all trips. Are we talking...
That'll be field trips.
Field trips?
Should we, I think we'd want to add into there the intended field class slash activity.
Right.
Like, I don't know, next to the bottom line, next to the class paragraph versus intended field slash class trips or activity.
Just include class trips.
Yeah, I think it's just really this middle area when the second paragraph to the third from the bottom paragraph where it's focusing on more of the field rather than the larger class or longer duration sort of.
Just, I want to clarify, the notification to the board would be field slash class trips. So it's including all, all trips.
And I guess the larger question would be, is that, is that, you know, I wouldn't want to adjust the policy if the policy is such that the principal of the building does that anyway or if they, you know, whatever the standing policy is, I think we just need to clarify the field trip part in the, in the first portion.
And this is a new policy, just, so there hasn't been one before.
There wasn't a policy that dictated it before, so we're, because we needed one to cover.
Shannon?
No.
Is this basically codify current practice?
Right.
Or is there anything this is adding in?
Well, I think when we went over it, I felt like we did, but now I'm feeling, now I feel like, I'm like, oh, I need to read this again because now I feel like there's a distinction that I didn't necessarily connect at the time. And I don't know if I've necessarily reported the trips other than to just say, these are the things that are happening.
I feel like that's what it's been in your principal's report.
Right.
You give us a list of what's happening.
Right.
And to me, that would be sufficient.
Typically, I have...
For the PDF file every morning that says the kids are going to so-and-so. So we're getting that feedback either through your principal's report or...
Or the daily announcements, okay.
So I think, I think what we're already doing is this through those two activities.
I think for consistency, because not all board members may get the daily notice or look at that, I think just continuing it in the principal's report. And it's not requiring board approval ahead of time. It's really just a notification.
Yep. So does that work, Shannon?
Sure.
So we'll just change those couple of minutes.
And are you...
We're going to take this, if you take your motion back. And we're going to, just to policy 4134 and policy 5139, take a motion to approve. Do you want to do that, Sandra?
Withdraw her motion?
Yeah.
I didn't know I made that.
Oh, sorry, Renee did.
I was really getting confused. It was a long time ago.
You're going to take the second back first. So you want to take your second back?
I'll take the second.
I will.
Yes.
I'll make a new motion.
For policy 4134 and policy 5139. Any one second? All in favor? Now, policy 6179, I'll take a motion to approve it as amended. Sandra? Your second. The amendments are small enough that I don't think we need to send it back to Policy Committee.
I would agree.
All in favor? Four zero. Thank you. These policies would be one at a time because it's the first year. Policy 1220, Advisory Committee, take a motion to approve. Renee? Sandra? Any questions or comments on that policy? Seeing none, all in favor? Four zero. Policy 9111 dot one, method of election, need a motion to approve. Renee? Sandra? Any questions or comments on that policy? Seeing none, all in favor? Four zero. Policy 9111 point three, resignation, motion to approve. Sandra? You have a second. Any questions or comments?
What was the policy before because it's written, you know, in bold that if the chairman resigns, it's submitted to the vice chair, but hasn't that always been?
So that's new language.
It's new language.
It wasn't there before.
There wasn't something...
It was never there before.
It was not articulated. Maybe that was the practice.
It might have been happening, but there was nothing in the policy that directed it back out.
Are we discussing this? Okay. Instead of chairman, can we just have a big chair?
And vice chair. Anything else on that one?
You should, school board member, that shouldn't be capitalized, right? That's very...
Yeah, there should need to be some, this school board, not school board member. Anything else? None, all in favor of 9111 point three, as ever? Four zero. Privileges for number two. Agent Jackie?
Slow night for you.
You got to do better next meeting. Announcements, Ashland School Board meeting, regular meeting, will be Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, 6:30 PM right here in the library.
That's today.
That's today.
Sorry, just in June.
That'll be June 6th, thank you. 2017, at 6:30, there will be a Policy Review Committee at 5:30, the same meeting in the same location. SOU Annual Board Meeting, Ashland Elementary School, Tuesday, May 16th, at 6:00 PM here in Ashland.
Can I ask a question about now? When is our next Withdrawal Study Committee meeting? Is it the 30th or the 31st?
We rescheduled that.
We rescheduled it and off the top of my head, I want to say the 31st.
And we do have a need for non-public tests.
May? We'll have to send that out. I don't think it got reported here.
I'm sorry, she thinks it was the 31st.
I know that we had changed it based on...
The conference.
Yeah.
Who's on this committee?
Kathy Fuller, Jeanette Stewart, Patsy Tucker, Tracy Tucker.
I refer to day-to-day. Didn't we change the Budget Committee? Today is no longer?
That became the Budget Committee representative.
Okay.
And Martine is going to be the public representative.
They're switching. They're still on committee, they're switching.
They're switching.
She's, they're appointed, the moderator or the acting moderator appoints, right?
The Budget Committee should appoint.
No, we appointed our own.
We did.
The assistant members.
To the SFRAS committee.
Yeah, Patsy would appoint Marty.
Patsy. Patsy would have suggested we...
Thank you.
So we do have a need for non-public. I'll take a motion to go on to the non-public. Renee, you have a second. Sandra?